I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for January 14, 2024. First order of business is going into executive session, so I move that the Select Board go into executive session for the purpose of, one, approving executive session minutes, and, two, discussing strategy related to bargaining with non-union employees. The matter involving bargaining with a non-union employee must be discussed in executive session because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and the Chair so declares that an executive session therefore is necessary. So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Mike Salmon?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. We will return to open session after our executive session meeting at, what, six o'clock?
Scheduled for six.
Yeah, for six. Okay. Okay. And...
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the continuation of the Select Board meeting for January 14, 2024. Let's start off with announcements and updates, and I'd like to make two statements and announcements. You know, the fires that are engulfing Los Angeles are really heartbreaking to anyone, irrespective of whether they have friends or family in the area. The loss of human life, the loss of family pets pains us all. Even the material losses are hard to contemplate because they include irreplaceable items that help keep families together, such as pictures of parents and others that are deceased, but are critical connections to people, those deceased individuals. I hope the fires give us in Brookline, safe for the time being, an appreciation of the work of our own first responders, firefighters, police, dispatchers, medical teams that spring into action when we need them the most. The impact of climate change that is causing a lot of the problems in Los Angeles is we are not immune to. So let's just keep our eyes open and appreciate those that can come and help us when things get really bad. I just had to say that because, you know, the Los Angeles situation is just so heartbreaking, and I don't know anyone out there. But next, I'd like to say that January 20th is Martin Luther King Day in America. There are other things happening on that day, but the important thing is MLK Day, as every year, the MLK Committee is having an event at the Coolidge Corner Theater. This year, we will be showing a film produced by Michelle and Barack Obama called Rustin about Bayard Rustin, the main organizer of the March on Washington in 1963. Although very few people have ever heard of Rustin because he was a radical and he was gay, which made him a target of J. Edgar Hoover and the FBI and Southern races, but also, and ironically, a target of many civil rights leaders. After the showing of the film, we will have a panel discussion with Kate Leslie, who teaches at the high school, and anyone who has had kids in the high school recently will know Kate Leslie, and Professor Martin Summers of Boston College. The film we'll be showing at the Coolidge Corner Theater beginning at 3:00 PM on January 20th, and the showing is free, but you must sign up for a ticket by going to the website coolidge.org/mlk. I hope to see many of you there. It's going to be a great program. Any other? Yeah, Michael.
So there's a follow-on to that in a sense. My wife read something out loud from, she was looking at the news online, Mayor Wu gave birth to a baby girl today. So first of all, congratulations. But 50 or even 25 years ago, that line might have been, seemed like it came from a fiction about an imaginary future. So change does happen, and indeed, Martin Luther King, the celebrations around Martin Luther King are an example of change, and yet incomplete change, certainly. And this is, I think, as well. I think sometimes we get very involved in the minutia of government, and certainly the devil is in the details, and those things are important. But progress does happen, and it's really wonderful to witness it, and I think it's important to remark on it when it happens.
Thank you. John?
I'm really looking forward to the Martin Luther King Day event, and I have actually seen that film, and it is terrific, and it is so good. I'm looking forward to seeing it for a second time. So I highly recommend that event. I want to mention a couple of events that people might want to participate in that are coming up in the days ahead, and one of them is a meeting tomorrow night, 5:30 PM. It's both via Zoom, and it's also in Room 103, right here at Town Hall. And it has to do with a major, major transformation of the Green Line, C Line, Beacon Street, that's going to occur in the next year or two. And it all has to do with the introduction of what they call the Type 10 car to the line, and the improvement to the line insofar as any stations that currently, any stops that currently lack disability access, all of them are going to have disability access. This does have implications for people who use a couple of the stops that will be eliminated. So that's something people might want to hear about and speak out about. And it has implications for the loss of literally dozens of trees that line the sea line route in Brookline. So that's tomorrow night, 5:30 PM, Room 103. There's also information as to how you can attend via Zoom. If you just Google search "Brookline MBTA meeting," you'll come across it. There's also going to be a forum on Thursday this week at 6:30 PM, and that's at the Public Library, right here in the Village, in Hunneman Hall, 6:30 PM. And it's going to be very informative. The title for this meeting is "The Hidden Cost of Plastic to Human Health." Our Public Health Department has been very involved in pulling this together, but so have a bunch of groups from Brookline, Mothers Out Front, Climate Action Brookline, just to name two of them. It's going to be a really important meeting for those who want to learn more about, excuse me, the growing awareness that people have about the problem of so-called forever chemicals in our waste stream, everyday plastics. So it's not just the forever chemicals. It's also, you know, the question of our sustainability of the use of everyday plastics that enter our waste stream. That's Thursday, and then we're not going to be meeting, it's like we're not going to be meeting next Tuesday. So I want to promote an event that is going to happen a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, January 22nd, at 6:00 PM. There's going to be a crucial meeting for the Washington Street Corridor Complete Streets Project, which impacts bicycle access, pedestrian access, car access, parking, et cetera, et cetera, for the length of Washington Street. In particular, this meeting kind of is going to pick up where the last meeting left off, and it's going to take a closer look at the impacts in the Brookline Village commercial area. So that's next Wednesday, January 22nd, 6:00 PM. That's Zoom only, but if you just go to the website, the webpage for the Washington Street Corridor Project, you'll see on that page, it says "Latest Developments, Learn More." And if you click on "Learn More," you'll get the, you'll go to where you can register to Zoom in to that meeting next Wednesday at 6:00. And that's all I got.
Thank you. David?
I also just want to announce a meeting that will be convening next Wednesday, January 22nd, will be the first meeting of the Committee of Seven for the Public Safety Building Lobby. That'll be at 10:00 AM in Room 103. It's also a hybrid meeting, so for those of you who are interested, can log in or come in person.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have public comment. Charlie, you want to read the rules?
Sure. Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once 15 minutes has been met, there's an opportunity at the conclusion of the Select Board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. Any person wishing to speak must begin their comment by identifying themselves with their full name, either their Brookline precinct number or street address, and the specific topic they wish to speak on. The Board encourages, but does not require, that remote users turn their video on when commenting. Bernard, we have, nobody signed up for public comment in advance tonight? So, oh, we did have one. Sorry. Thank you, Chaz. Good eye. We didn't before the meeting. It must maybe... Okay, the first person signed up for public comment is Regina Frawley. Regina, you may... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm seeing, that's what the name looks like. Is this a, is this an old?
That might be the old form.
I do see Anthony Bono. Anthony, please approach the podium in three minutes. We'll be here.
No, it's interesting. Thanks. I think we were right that it's last year, last week's list, so.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year. My name is Anthony Bono, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 17, Member of the Advisory Committee and President of the TMA. I would like to briefly comment on your upcoming vote regarding adopting General Order 43. Thank you all for taking the immigration issue so seriously. The incoming administration has once again revived the worst of America's nativist past, equating undocumented immigrants with violent criminals generally. Policies rooted in such rhetoric are harmful and divisive. The administration's desire to perform indiscriminate deportations does not make our community safer. On the contrary, it leaves us poorer, less safe, and less secure, and less free. This is not the first time that the federal government has embarked on such an inhumane roundup of people simply for seeking a better life for themselves and their families. In 1850, the Fugitive Slave Act was passed as part of the Great Compromise. This law created a federal force to track runaway slaves into states where slavery was abolished. While local communities at the time could not override these federal laws, still, they found ways to take a stand. In 1842, the Supreme Court ruled in Prigg v. Pennsylvania that the federal government cannot require state or local officials to enforce federal policies. In the wake of the Fugitive Slave Act, many towns across Massachusetts, including Weymouth, Marshfield, Princeton, Southborough, Blackston, all formally condemned the law and refused to assist in its enforcement within their capacity in the law. If the Select Board passes General Order 43 today, Brookline will join proud, these other Massachusetts towns, in speaking out against unjust and harmful policies. The proposed policy is lawful, practical, and protects those that are most vulnerable. I urge you to vote yes on General Order 43, sending a clear message that Brookline values compassion and justice. As we consider this decision, let us live by the words of the town of Blackston, whose resolution against the Fugitive Slave Act in 1850 stated, "Aid the weak rather than the strong, and by no means strengthen the arm of the oppressor." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Giovanni Valencia.
Before we go on, let me just mention, we approved General Order 43 last week. This week, we're going to be approving a statement that includes a number of other items. Okay. But thank you for your comments, which were appropriate in any case. Yes, Giovanni.
Thank you. You're Select Board members. Thank you for the time tonight. My name is Giovanni Valencia, and I am the new Executive Director with the Brookline Community Development Corporation, Brookline CDC. I joined the Brookline CDC about four months ago, and this is a pleasure to have the opportunity to talk to you about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. This program has been implemented in the town of...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Gio. We saw you were on the public comment sheet, but we actually have you speaking a little later in the agenda. This is, this is just for folks who want to give a public comment.
Oh, I didn't even have the opportunity to talk later.
But I thought you wanted to provide an additional comment.
No, no, no. I'm here to answer questions about that item.
Item number nine. So we will, we will call you up when...
All right. Thank you.
When we're really focused on that issue.
All right. We do have one person in the audience online with their hand up to speak, Don Oats. I'm going to promote you to co-host, so that way you can share your video, and your three minutes will begin, if you wish to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm unable to put my video on right now, but thank you. I submitted this for the packet, but nothing that I submitted was in the packet, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. My name's Don Oats. I'm here tonight to reiterate the urgent need for public deliberations regarding the concerns I raised in response to Rob Schoen's testimony at last Tuesday's meeting. They go beyond a simple neighborhood dispute and speak to issues of integrity, fairness, and the broader trust that residents place in this town's governance. Unfortunately, my statements were questioned as false, misleading, and unfair. To address this, I have included some but not all of the supporting documents that should dispel any doubts of the validity of my claim. These documents substantiate the facts and highlight the serious nature of the issues that I've brought forward. It's disheartening that this matter has been dismissed as a neighbor concern. I see it as a community concern that speaks to core values of equity, integrity, and accountability that we should all expect from town leadership. An officer who is tasked with upholding bylaws equitably and inclusively should also be expected to adhere to those same bylaws himself. Suing the town ZBA members and the trustee of a disabled child for 40A violations based on a reasonable accommodation request that was approved raises serious concerns about equity and patriocracy. Such actions not only erode public trust, but also undermine the integrity of the planning board. Frankly, it does not reflect well on our town. I urge this Board to conduct public deliberations to restore confidence in our government. I urge this board to conduct public deliberations to restore confidence in our governance and to ensure decisions are made fairly and in the best interest of the community. The concerns I have raised, supported by documentation, will be shared with both Town Council and the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, and they warrant serious and transparent consideration. This is not about one individual or one dispute. It's about ensuring our town's leadership reflect the values of fairness, accountability, and inclusivity that our community deserves. I want to add to that, that, that the disruption in the public meeting and the interjection of Select Member Mike Sandman.
Okay, excuse me, be careful.
It effectively disregarded my testimony. And I would like to request that disruptions like that, that can taint the questioning of the serious concerns that I brought forward, I note that no Select Board member questioned or interviewed Rob Schoen on any of the items that I raised, and they were all valid items. Mr. Green, I did email you a letter with all of the items in it.
You have 30 seconds.
I would like all the details that I emailed to be submitted to the hearing packet for the next meeting considered, and I would like thoughtful deliberation of those serious concerns that I have about the candidacy and the ability of the candidate. This is about the candidate, and this is about the process, and this is about the breaking of the procedure for a public hearing that effectively ensured that no one else would comment or question that the...
Your time has expired, please conclude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks in the audience or online can use the hand raise feature or raise their hand to let us know if they'd like to speak. No one on the online is, so Regina, please feel free to approach the podium. Your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Regina Frawley, from South Brookline, Town Meeting Member. There was an article in Today's Globe about Mayor Wu's current proposal to the legislature, and it includes a very apparently detailed section on how tax breaks can be given to seniors. And as some of you know, I'm from a section of town that has had 35% to 40% increase in taxes over the last few years. And you have a rent stabilization issue tonight. I would like to combine the two and say, I would like the town administrator to contact the Wu Administration to get a copy of the details, because as Sandman said, the devil's in the details. So let's see what those details are. And I would appreciate they've, they're being forwarded to me, and I would like to consider resubmitting a warrant article that would give a break to some members of lower-income seniors who've lived here for a period of time. It is coming before this board at least twice that I know of. I think a third time could be a charm. Thank you.
Okay, folks in the audience once again or online can use the hand raise feature or raise their hand if they'd like to make a public comment. We have 26 participants online, and no one is using the hand raise feature to let us know they would like to make a public comment.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have miscellaneous items, first being the approval of meeting minutes of January 7, 2025. Any corrections from the Select Board for those minutes? Okay, I'm over approval of the meeting minutes of January 7, 2025. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, items 6B through 6I, or the remaining miscellaneous items. There may be one that's, that's...
I do just sort of like, 6F was actually, it was accidentally left on as a duplicate from last week, so that's already been voted, so 6F was withdrawn.
So 6B through 6E and 6G through 6I, I'd like to approve in omnibus fashion. Any, any desire on the part of the Select Board to pull anything out? Okay, so I'm over approval of items 6B through 6E and 6G through 6I. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, Boards and Commissions Interviews. We have two interviewees, one for the Zero Admissions Advisory Board. That's Alan Levitin, and he is in the audience. Would like to step up to the mic and please introduce yourself and why you would like to be a member of the Zero Admissions Advisory Board and what you can offer to that, that board.
Okay, I'm Alan Levitin, 20 Chapel Street, Precinct 1. My wife and I moved from New Jersey to Massachusetts when I retired in 2004. We've been Brookline residents since 2007. I'm a chemical engineer. I had a 37-year career designing, commissioning, and operating chemical plants at Roman Haas Company. My professional experience is relevant to technologies that are important to eliminating greenhouse gas emissions from residential and commercial buildings. A lot of people, I guess, when I think of chemical engineers, just think of chemicals, but there's actually a big overlap with mechanical engineers with things like heat transfer. So insulation, refrigeration, heat pumps, things like that are all part of the things that chemical engineers deal with in chemical plants. I was a trustee at Longwood Towers from 2011 until last month. I'm free at last, I guess. And during that time, I was involved in multiple mass save audits. It resulted in significant reductions in electricity consumption. I also led the effort to install EV charging stations in Longwood Towers in 2021, working at first with EverSource Make Ready, and then eventually we used the Massachusetts EVIP, Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, to get funding for those charging stations. I was a member of the Select Board Climate Action Committee as a representative from Brookline. During my time on the Select Board Climate Action Committee, I was an active member of several subcommittees. I was a member of the Energy Stretch Code Subcommittee when, in support of the first stretch code in Brookline in 2009. I was the author of the Brookline Greenhouse Gas Inventory, which I think is still the only, the most recent one that we have. I was a member of the Climate Action Plan Subcommittee in 2012. I was a member of the Community Choice Aggregation Subcommittee in 2016, when we went through the details of getting Community Choice Aggregation approved for the town. I was a member of the Net Zero Ninth School Subcommittee, which a few of the members who were Town Meeting Members, I think some of the things we did there led to the, some of the original work for, support for heat pumps for, for the new schools. And I was a co-positionsner of the Fall 2019 Warren Article for the prohibition of new fossil fuel infrastructure in major construction. It's often the case that the town boards have some members with experience or skills in a specific area of the committee's responsibility. The ZAB charter, in fact, refers to one possible expertise as engineering. With my professional experience as an engineer on the various Select, various SBAC committees, and my work as a chemical engineer in industry, I think I have something to offer to the, to ZAB. I know that the town has approved the contractor for the new Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. And I also know ZAB is going to be involved in the review and approval of that plan. I don't know if the plan's going to include a greenhouse gas inventory. I did, so I'm not sure what the status of that is. But whether it has a formal greenhouse gas inventory or some other less formal method of tracking the source of greenhouse gas emissions in Brookline, I think my experience would be relevant and useful. Town Meeting approved Warren Article 26 in the fall of 2022, which was the request for the General Court to pass legislation to allow Brookline to assess a surcharge on natural gas bills. When I looked this over, it's, one of the things that struck me is it's, seems like a first step, perhaps along the lines of the BIRD, of the, the Emissions Reduction Disclosure legislation they have in Boston and in, and in Cambridge. And I would assume that down the line, this is something, something of this nature is going to happen in Brookline. And I think I could help out in, in pursuing that work. And then finally, Electrify Brookline, which I'm familiar with. I know they've got a support system for helping people who are interested in electrifying their homes. And that's another area where I think it could help out. I, I have done some sort of ad hoc work with homeowners and condo boards. You're providing them with some assistance, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. I have one question. Your Building Emissions Reduction and Disclosure Ordinance, or in Brookline, Warren Article, if it's submitted, tell me more about that. And is that where the surcharge of natural gas bills would?
Yeah, what I meant was, the Town Meeting already approved a Warren Article to ask the General Court to allow Brookline, and I think other towns, to put a surcharge on natural gas. And, which actually is kind of an interesting thing, because the, in Boston and Cambridge, what they do is actually fairly complicated. They use, I think they use the EPA Portfolio Manager, and people have to put in detailed reports of how much energy they use. And, and then over, in the future, I don't know exactly when it starts, buildings, especially large residential buildings and commercial buildings, will have to pay, if, if, if they have greenhouse gas emissions, they, they'll have to pay some sort of a surcharge to Cambridge or Boston to do some of the things that Warren Article 26 proposed, to support electrification in, for low-income residents and so on. So I wasn't suggesting that Brookline should have something exactly like Boston and Cambridge. What I was saying, that I, I think Warren Article 26 is sort of a first step along that line. I also, I, I don't know the background of why they only selected natural gas. I can sort of guess, when we did the greenhouse gas inventory, that back, the work was actually done around 2010, trying to get, we wanted to get information on all the sources of greenhouse gas emissions. And obviously, home heating oil was one of those. And I went to Frank Smizek, was our representative at that time, and tried to get connections with the electric company, the gas company, and so on, which he helped out with. But fuel oil, heating oil, what I was told is there's a large number of suppliers of heating oil. It was difficult to work with them. They, they were concerned about competitive information getting out. But I still think that if, if, if property owners are going to pay an assessment for gas that they use, we need to figure out some way to get people who do heating oil as well. Now, heating oil usage...
Wouldn't that be a pretty regressive tax, though?
Well, it's, it's already been passed by, I understand, my understanding of Warren Article 26 was that Brookline is making that request to the state. It would require a vote, a referendum, but...
And I guess you're saying you would support that? And I guess what I'm asking is, isn't that a regressive tax on, on particularly, probably lower-income people who are less capable of electrifying?
Well, the, one of the things that, in, in, in the, the Boston, Cambridge legislation, I don't know all the, in the grass details, but funds that are collected, part of that money is to support low-income families, to help them electrify. So I, I don't have any specific plans right now. What I'm saying is that I, I can imagine that Brookline, over time, could evolve into something like this, where, where there will be some sort of a, could, could be some sort of a, an inventory of how much greenhouse gas people are producing, and perhaps charging some, some, some sort of a fee for that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just listening to that discussion, first of all, the qualifications that you've, that you've listed are really very impressive, very impressive. But I would say that you have to be careful about timing. It's one thing if you collect a tax, and then with the intent of then into some future point, having enough money to support people who have difficulty paying that tax, there's a gap. And I would urge you, when you're thinking about these kinds of things, to remember the social consequences of what you're doing across the entire spectrum of the community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And let me say, I, I'm aware of that, and I'm not proposing any specific thing. What I was trying to do was describe what's being done in Boston and Cambridge, and suggesting that I can see something like that happening in Brookline. As far as the details, I agree with you, that that would have to be accommodated.
Paul?
Yep, Alan, thank you for applying and for your comments. I think you touched on just about every subject that, I'm the liaison to the ZAB Committee. I think you've touched on all the major issues that we've actually been discussing in preparation for the updated Climate Action and Resiliency Plan called the CARP. It's a terrible name, but, but I did want to speak to, and clearly you have very relevant experience across the board. I'm interested in your experience with, you know, large buildings. So you're, you were a trustee of Longwood Towers, congratulations on your retirement. But that's an area that, you know, we've really struggled as a town to, to help enable larger building owners, operators, to, to be able to convert and become more efficient, become fossil fuel-free. Can you speak a little bit about what, what are the, some of the challenges that you see for these larger, you know, either condo or rental buildings converting?
Yeah, there's a few things. First of all, the, one of the challenges, I'm sorry, a lot of these buildings are very old. And convert, you're converting a single-family home is straightforward, compared to a big building, as you know, it's going to be very straightforward, do a single-family home. But you've got all sorts of things to consider. If the, if there's some sort of a central heat, like a lot of, a lot of buildings have, still have steam radiators or hot water radiators, you have to come up with some way to service that. I mean, for example, I've thought about it at Longwood Towers. We have a combination of heat pumps in the unit that are supplied, they're actually water-source heat pumps, and we supply hot water to those heat pumps. The hot water is supplied from gas-fired boilers. And I can sort of imagine something like that is fairly straightforward. And technology-wise, you just have a heat pump to replace the, the gas boilers. But other places have all sorts of different things. So I recognize that it's a very complicated thing. What I would say, and actually is one of the things I was going to mention, the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, I, I don't know if you guys are familiar with, with that. It's, I guess it's an NGO. And they do a lot of work supporting electrification. And they have a program, it's a beta, a pilot program, that I actually applied for, for Longwood Towers, but I haven't, we haven't been told we're not going to get it yet. And what they're doing is they're actually bringing in, it's funded by whatever the source of funds are for Massachusetts Clean Energy. They're bringing in engineers and experts, consultants, who are looking for a small number of large buildings, including residential buildings. I think to them, large means more, it's either 15 or 50 residences. And they're going to bring these people in to actually do designs for these buildings. And then those designs will be available to the buildings if they choose to do the, do the work they can. If they choose not to do the work, they don't have to. But what, what Mass CEC is trying to accomplish is to find out exactly what is required for doing big buildings like this. And I would suggest that ZAB and the town, and working with this thing, should get in touch with, with, with Mass CEC. And the other one, the Mass Department of Energy Resources, has some really good people. When we were putting together, we, I didn't, I was sort of a researcher, really, per Warren Article, I guess it's 19, the, the natural gas ban. I was sort of a researcher, really, per Warren Article, I guess it's 19, the natural gas ban. But one of the things we were trying to do was get examples to present to various boards and commissions and town meeting members why they should support it. And I got a lot of information from an engineer who works at Mass D O E R. They had done a lot of work on designs and hypothetical designs for electrification and so on. So there's a lot within basically Massachusetts government, a lot of expertise around to help out with these things.
Thanks, Alan.
Okay, thank you.
David.
I noticed in reviewing your resume that you have spent a lot of your professional life working in process design in a variety of vocals, including England, Japan, China, Singapore. I'm wondering what you took from those experiences that you would apply to your recommendations on ZAB?
Oh, boy. Well, I guess the one thing you learn, if you live in a lot of places overseas, it's different than going on vacation for a couple of weeks someplace. And you learn, you know, to live in all sorts of different environments, all sorts of different people, all sorts of different cultures. My wife and I both had to adapt. It's probably harder for her. I went to work every day, and she likes to joke that she had to figure out if something was toilet cleaner or shampoo when she went to the store. But I say that working with all sorts of diverse groups is that. The other thing, I worked in Japan a lot, not just when we lived there, but I used to travel. We had a subsidiary in Japan. And I used to like to joke that in the U.S., we were good at making decisions, and we could make decisions over and over again, changing them. In Japan, it's a very collaborative process where you take longer sometimes to make the decision, but everybody has been brought on board with the decision. Once you move ahead, you move ahead as a group.
Thank you. We'll be making our decision on appointments to ZAB and other boards at a future meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have the Planning Board. And the applicant is Thomas Rinkes, who's in the audience. And please introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be on the Planning Board and what you have to offer to that board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Green. Good evening. My name is Thomas Rankes. And I'd like to thank the Select Board for taking time to consider me for this vacancy on the Planning Board. I'm currently a town meeting member representing Precinct 13 and a member of the Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'm a father of three young children, all under the age of seven, two of whom attend the Hayes School. I'm an active member of the PTO. I chair fundraisers, and I'm our schools representative for the Massachusetts Safe Route Schools. And I also coach the first-grade boys' soccer and basketball teams. I've lived in Brookline since 2020. My wife and I chose to move here from Washington, D.C. because of the unique combination of urban and suburban amenities our town has to offer. I'm an attorney and urban planner by training. I worked as a litigator until I decided I was more interested in public policy and made the choice to leave my law firm and pursue a master's degree in urban and regional planning at Georgetown University. During my time at Georgetown, I became proficient in using geographic information systems, eventually winning Georgetown's university-wide prize for use of GIS in a research project. I was able to assist in and observe public projects as part of my coursework. And I also had extensive coursework related to urban design and architecture, with a significant portion of my cohort being architects themselves. Combined with my legal background, I'm very capable of interpreting and understanding zoning codes, land use law, and regulatory regimes. And I'm also currently involved in private commercial development in Metro West. In addition, through my work with the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I've become aware of some of the difficulties Brookline's built environment presents to people with disabilities. After meeting at a pedestrian advisory committee walking audit, I've become acquainted with Jim Lee of the Disability Commission, who has told me that he would like a formal liaison from the Planning Board to the Disability Commission. And I believe I would be able to adequately fill that role in view of the legal issues involved in disability and access cases. I truly believe that Brookline is a special place to live, and I feel incredibly blessed to be able to dedicate my time to being a public servant in our town. As we move forward with our town's comprehensive plan, I believe that the Planning Board, Select Board, and Steering Committee have an incredible opportunity to develop an equitable, economically robust vision for Brookline's future. And with my skill set from planning school, combined with my legal background, I believe I am well-positioned to offer new perspective and technical expertise to the Planning Board.
Thank you. Mike.
So thanks very much. The urban planning experiences and backgrounds are very interesting. The Planning Board tends to focus on projects sort of one at a time. And it would actually be, I think, beneficial for the board, particularly once we have a new comprehensive plan, to have more of an urban planning overview as they look at projects. But just the same, a lot of the work that gets done is around, well, okay, what material is used on this facade? And what, you know, how does this shadow affect neighbors and so forth? So I just want, I want to make sure that you know what you're getting into, basically, when you do this. So can you tell us a little bit about how, you know, how often have you attended Planning Board meetings? And do you have a sense of the flow of work there?
So to date, unfortunately, I have not actually attended a Planning Board meeting, but I do understand the type of work that the Planning Board does. Before I submitted my application, I reviewed all of the meeting agendas and most of the meeting minutes from 2023 to make sure it was something that I would be comfortable with and that I thought my skill set would be appropriate for. And with regards to their view of design features, materials, things of that sort, in my academic background, I was exposed to a lot of that at Georgetown because it's always going to be relevant, even in an urban planning context, what the built environment looks like, what it feels like, and how people interact with it. And a lot of that comes down to design and how it makes people feel. So I'm not necessarily a babe in the woods with regards to it. I'm certainly not a trained architect, but it's something I'm familiar with. And in addition, in my private life, I am involved in some private commercial development in Metro West where these things come up regularly. So I'm aware of it. I've worked with architects, and I am comfortable and conversant in dealing with those issues.
Thank you.
Well.
Yep, thank you for your application. It's not often that I have a kindred spirit come. I too am a stay-at-home dad with young children. So I appreciate your service of our town and also for what you do for your children. I know how hard that can be from time to time. So kind of following on to Mike's question, what, so typically, it's design review that they're doing, and they're talking about materials and things like that. We're starting to move towards form-based zoning, which takes some of the creativity decision-making out of, you know, the hands of the Planning Board, really to create predictability for not only the development community, but for those, the abutters in the town, to understand what they're going to get. Do you have any views about form-based zoning? And, you know, is it too restrictive? Does it need to be loosened up? Would you support the continuation and application of form-based zoning to other parts of the town?
Yeah, thank you for that question. That's a good one. So with regards to form-based zoning, it does sometimes have the potential to lead to a little bit more grit in the gears sometimes. You know, I think we saw that this year at Town Meeting, it was discussed with how it almost leads to kind of a constant flow of applications for variances, for very small things that are just slightly off. How can we change those? How can we do those things? With that said, I do think it has strong applicability to a town like Brookline. I think we care very much about taking care of our neighbors and making sure everyone is on the same page with regards to what our town is going to look like and how we're going to develop moving forward. And I think form-based zoning has a tendency to increase public confidence in the process because I believe that it can be more transparent and that people can look at form-based zoning and understand how things are going to look, how things are going to be developed, and feel like they can follow that process pretty cleanly as opposed to other forms of, you know, traditionally Euclidean zoning.
All right. Go ahead. Well, I do have one more thing to say, but go ahead. I was going to say that I think Brookline's, I've used the analogy that Brookline zoning code and some of its other regulations as well have been laid down by, like, sedimentary rock, one thing at a time, to deal with, a particular situation arises, and we have a regulation. A particular thing arises next, and we have another regulation, and another, and another, and another. And form-based zoning has the advantage, I think, of heading through all of that and giving us a single, a single set of standards to approach. So I, John Pollan, hoping that that process continues and that there'll be support for it on the Planning Board without an attempt to sort of claw back authority, which is always a risk.
Okay, thank you. And like I said before, we'll be making our decision on appointments to the Planning Board at a future meeting.
Great, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, item nine, Tenant Stabilization Program. Proposed a change to scope of services for the Brookline Community Development Corporation's tenant support program.
Yes, and we have Giovanni Valencia in person. And I'm promoting Iwana and believe, I have Deborah Brown listed, but not online, so.
Yes, she has a personal situation. Ms. Brown is the president of the board. She cannot make it tonight. She sends her regards.
Thank you, Gio. And Iwana is online. Hold on, I will make her easier to view, but you are welcome to begin anytime.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Giovanni will explain. This is a contract that I had brought to the board back in December of, oh, I'm so sorry. Good evening to the board. My name is Iwana Lindo Smith, and I'm the Housing and Community Planning Director in the Planning Department. On December 7th of last year, we brought this contract before the board to have it approved. However, there was a question as to whether or not the BCDC, as the corporation who's be, will be the person, the grantee that we're giving this money to, if they would be the ones to collect all the money, if there would be some way that they would collect all the money for themselves because they're also landlords. And so we had to change the scope of services so to protect the town and to protect them. So that, so this is what we have done. It's changed the, we've brought it back to you with the scope of services changed. This would be on number two of the contract and the second paragraph. And this was presented to the board. We've sent this to you earlier. So we're asking for your approval tonight of this contract. And if there are any questions, please feel free to ask. That's the only thing that had changed since December. It's just the scope of services to be sure that everyone is protected and understood that this will not be a contract for BCDC only, but any landlord that is in Brookline that needs, that has rented owed to them. And so if there are any questions, please feel free to ask. Giovanni is here to elaborate more on this if you need, if you need it. Thank you very much.
Okay, before, what I've, before you go and afterwards, I'd like you to sort of explain the program in more general terms. But I just want to say that in December, the Select Board had many concerns about this contract, including concerns regarding the potential for conflicts of interest. To address these concerns, I actually drafted some language that you see in the packet. I assume my language is in the packet.
Yes, I made sure it stayed there. I'm sorry.
I saw it there, but, which allows BCDC to be reimbursed for unpaid rent by tenants, but requires that in running the program, it does not give itself any advantage over other landlords and that there's no collusion or preference of their tenants over other tenants. To provide the data to monitor this, BCDC must also provide the planning department with certain information. So from my standpoint, and Iwana agrees, that that addresses the concerns that we had and that people in the community had regarding this agreement. Any thoughts from the board?
The change.
I was going to have some thoughts, but I'm anxious to hear the presentation.
Okay. With that sort of introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Again, my name is Giovanni Valencia, Executive Director with the Brookline Community Development Corporation, BCDC. I'm here to provide additional information about the Brookline's CDC Emergency Rental Assistance Program. As you are aware, this program is designed to assist low-income residents facing housing instability due to unforeseen financial hardship. Brooklyn CDC has worked with Metro West Collaborative Development, or Metro West CD, to create the Emergency Rent Assistance Program to help alleviate housing insecurity for Brooklyn residents. Since its inception in 2023, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program successfully stabilized the housing situation of approximately 50 Brooklyn households through funding and counseling. Just over the last three months, BCDC has supported about 16 households with tenant counseling. We are currently launching a new program round having been awarded funds from the Brooklyn Community Preservation Act, CPA, and the Brooklyn Community Foundation. To ensure fairness and transparency, Brooklyn CDC has not and will not directly distribute funds to the benefit of its tenants. Instead, tenants facing housing instability are required to follow the same detailed application process and guidelines as others. These procedures were designed by the Commonwealth and implemented by Metro West Collaborative Development, or Contractor. In fact, we have little to no interaction in the day-to-day funding approval decisions. That is left to Metro CD. Our role is to provide counseling for the more complex rental assistance situations where tenants need help securing employment, education, or other resources. We also serve as a funding and audit, on a funding and audit role for reporting and oversight. Further, as with any other tenant, we encourage Brooklyn tenants to seek the support of the Rental Assistance for Families in Transition, or RAFT, program prior to requesting local funds. This allows us to better leverage our funds and serve more families. In addition, we have a strong program guidelines to limit misuse. With the town's assistance and approval, we have established firm eligibility requirements. We are grateful for the continued support of the town of Brooklyn and look forward to continuing supporting Brooklyn tenants with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. If you have any further questions, I'm here to answer. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Any questions from the board? John?
Thank you very much. Thanks for helping us understand the program and thanks for your role with the CDC. Yes, CDC, Brookline CDC, excuse me. Yeah, as some people, BCDC, right. I had a question for Chaz, I think it might be for you. Is the original source of these funds ARPA?
No.
No.
No, it's Iwana, yeah, it's the HAG.
Housing Trust.
Yes, the Housing Trust.
It's a housing trust which receives monies from a whole bunch of sources, including.
Correct, including from out of the Free Cash Waterfall, the different allocation.
Right, right, okay, that's good. Where ARPA is concerned, you know, and I'm glad to hear that this is not originating with ARPA because, you know, those monies are going to run out. The only flag I want to raise on this is, first of all, a flag of approval and endorsement to say that the work done by our Housing Advisory Board and the work done by Brookline CDC is really going to be meaningful to, I'll say dozens, that's probably a safe number, of tenants who are going to get some emergency relief from these funds. And it does appear that, because I see this happening in community after community, that providing some kind of a safety net for tenants in emergency situations is an expectation that, you know, is becoming more and more embedded in a lot of communities. And I think the key to our being able to do this going forward is going to be the funding and finding the funding and. be the funding and finding the funding and, you know, using our most sort of creative approaches to seeking funding from other sources. So to the extent that Brookline CDC and also our Housing Advisory Board are anxious to see this continue, I look forward to working with them, you and them, to find state funds, find funds from other, you know, philanthropic funds, et cetera, funds, because in order for this to be more than just a one-off, you know, we, we're going to have to do that. I don't think we're going to be able to decrease our commitment to operating funds for the, you know, for the other functions of, of local government for this, but I do think we can probably continue to seek and hopefully succeed in getting funds from some, some of these outside sources. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Giovanni, Gio, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it's nice to see you again and thank you for speaking about the program. But first, you should know, I'm, I think this is a critical program. As, as you know, it's, it's much easier to help someone stay within their home and have to go find another home, especially within rental market, especially if you become homeless. But I do have, I do have one question, this is kind of more of an operational issue. If there's a tenant that, that is in a situation with you, so as a tenant of your organization, the BCDC, that is going through a difficult time, maybe they're under an eviction process, because I, I assume that does happen with you from time to time. How, how would, how do you handle that? What, how does that tenant engage? Do they engage with you? Do you counsel them to go to this third party? I'm just curious about how that will work.
Correct, that is a great question, Mr. Warren. So let me just say this. During the first round of implementation, we supported about 50 households. With this new round of funding, including Brooklyn Community Foundation and the CPA funds, we expect to help at least 80 households. Brooklyn CDC owns two properties. In total, we have 22 rental units or 22 tenants. So most likely, worst-case scenario, we are not going to just use that money for our tenants. Now, if any of the tenants living in Brooklyn CDC properties are in, facing financial hardship, they will have to apply the same way that everybody has to apply through our partner, Metro West CD. Now, before they get to that point, when we know that they are behind rent, that they have, they are facing hardship, we contact them as their landlords, with our property management, we reach out to see what is the situation, and if they have those unforeseen circumstances, we encourage them to apply and support them with the application for the RAF program before. So that is the situation. They have to go through Metro, Metro West CD. Before that, they will apply to RAF program with our support. We just hired a community organizer who will be paying attention to our tenants. And in the situation that they need to apply for this program specifically, for funds from the Brookline, the Town of Brookline, they apply to, through our partner. The partner takes, makes all the decisions about providing or not the funding, and we directly, we will not allocate funding to the tenants or to a landlord that will be ourselves.
Thank you, Bernard. I know I'm on a short leash. So, another question I have is in, in section three of the contract, and again, this is just for clarification, I may have missed it in the contract. It says that landlords of household units that meet the requirements of the grant agreement. Are there requirements of the grant agreement? Is that defined in this contract somewhere? Iwana, or Chaz, or Gio? I'm talking specifically about item three, it says line item budget. Emergency rental assistance is 102,400. Landlord in, recipient of trust funds are landlords or household units that meet the requirements of the grant agreement.
Okay.
Where is the grant agreement specified?
Mr. Warren, the, that is, the 102,000, what we did, we broke it down, that we could, we only allotted 20% of the amount, because the amount is 128. We allotted 20%. Just 20% could be used to pay Metro West and, and Brookline CDC for counseling services. The 102,000, we're, what we're stating here, this, this is strictly for, to pay landlords for rent, for rental assistance. It's, it's not to be used for anything else.
I do understand that, but...
What is saying, what has happened is we also have incorporated the RFP that we had sent out, that we had, because we did do an RFP, and that is also incorporated in, in this contract here, that would explain, that tells the BCDC and the Metro West exactly what we expect them to do. They have to get information from the land, from the landlords. The landlords have to sign papers to say that they're, they're owed this rent. We also get a W-9 from the, and it's stated that we get all this other information from the landlord before we actually pay directly to the landlord, not to the tenants themselves.
And that's defined in the RFP?
And that's the part, yes, which is attached to the part of the contract.
So your, your question is, what is the grant agreement? This document is the grant agreement, which incorporates the RFP by reference? And that has the criteria, what he mentioned, you have to go to the RAF and make sure that, like, all that stuff is defined in the RFP? Correct. Okay, perfect, thank you.
I have, I have a question, something that Iwana said. He said 20% of the total grant is allocated to Metro West and to BCDC for providing counseling. Can you break that up between, I, I know it's very typical in a grant to give, to provide some funding for administrative costs. And so how much of that is administrative costs and how much of it is for actual services, counseling services that are delivered to the tenant? And I don't mind who answers it.
Yes, I can, I have those notes here on my paper, if you like. So the, the total grant is for $128,000. From that, $102,000 goes directly to the landlords to support with the Emergency Rental Program. $15,451 go to Metro West, because they are implementing, they are doing all the, all the work with the tenants, including website, applications, management. And $10,149 go to Brooklyn CDC for counseling services. This is, those are funds that help us with providing counseling services to the tenants. We are, I don't see technically that we are taking administrative fee or overhead. Those funds are 100% allocated to support the program.
So Metro West effectively, I appreciate that they're maintaining a website, they're handling applications, they're processing those applications, they're receiving $15,000 out of that amount to do that.
From this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Your word.
That does seem reasonable, thank you.
Okay, anything else? And I'd like to, I'm sorry, I thought I heard something. Yeah, okay. Then I'd like to move approval and authorize the chair to execute fiscal year 2025 contract for the Brookline Community Development Corporation, funding to operate a tenant stabilization program funded by the Housing Trust Fund, the amount of $128,000, and operated by Metro West. Anything else we need to say? Okay, I move approval, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Michael Salmon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Giovanni.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Iwana.
Thank you.
Next, the language access policy. This came before us back in October, I believe, and we did not vote. So this presentation will be something that we will vote on.
I'm promoting Ahmad and Caitlin right now. Ahmed right now.
Ahmed, Caitlin, and Lloyd as well.
Well, Lloyd's on, thank you. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I believe I'll be sharing my screen, if that's correct?
Yes, you should be able to do that, Ahmed.
Great. Okay. Hi, everyone. Good evening, thank you for having us back. Are you all able to see my screen?
Not yet.
Yeah.
No? Okay.
No, we're not seeing a screen share just yet.
Oh, I, that's because I didn't hit share. That might be the problem. Are you able to see now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for having us back to discuss my favorite topic, your favorite topic, the language access policy for the town of Brookline. So we just wanted to give you all just some of the brief updates on the work that we've been doing since we last met in October, but to quickly go over some of the overarching, you know, initiatives for the policy. As you all probably know, about 30% of the town self-describes themselves as speakers of languages other than English, and among them are individuals who speak less, speak English less than proficiently, or are limited in their English proficiency. And as you all know, the Civil Rights Act, of course, extends its definitions of inclusion to be more inclusive of folks of different national origin, which of course extends to those who speak languages other than English. And so the, what we found out through a series of surveys is that the majority of our LOTE residents do not know how to request public services or are underinformed on how to do so. And many, many residents, 70% of community organizations cite that language barriers are the main obstacles that are keeping folks from understanding the programs and resources that are available to them. And so the goal of the language access policy, or language access overall, is to ensure that these language barriers don't exist, ensure that our LEP residents have equitable access to all of the town's public processes, policies, and information. That's the external goal for the policy and internally, to make sure that staff and departments are aware of the policy, are, are able to comply with it. And so, then, following, hopeful, the approval of the policy, town departments will receive a copy of the policy itself, and they will be coordinating with, with me and my colleagues from the Office of Diverseity Equity Inclusion and Community Relations to implement language access plans for their respective departments. So implementation of the language access plan will involve translation and interpreting of what the policy calls vital information, which we'll go over in a little bit more detail in a second, but translation for written text, interpreting for public meetings, which can be virtually in-person or over the phone. These are, are made tools for implementing language access. And so going back to the term vital, the policy itself doesn't give us a, a, a well-detailed definition of vital, it really leaves us the flexibility to sort of work with departments to identify what they consider vital documents. And since we've last met, this is something that we really try to do with departments as we continue to meet with them. And departments told us about the public-facing information that they have already been distributing before this policy, and they define vital documents to include things such as flyers, emails, brochures, even public information sessions that they hold publicly. And so the policy doesn't necessarily add to this list, but it allows us to make these vital documents accessible to folks who don't speak English. And so when we say vital documents, this is what we mean. And so we've worked with departments to clearly define what vital information is, how often that information is distributed to the public, how is it distributed to the public, whether it's electronic or physically distributed. And with that information that they provided us, we worked with several vendors to estimate the cost of providing translation for these vital documents into the five most widely-spoken languages in Brookline. And so what you see here is sort of a, a list of estimates that, that Collaboration Division Departments has helped us make. And so some departments, for which the cost is an actual cost, those departments have either been already working with me on translating their vital documents, or before I joined, they've already had some mechanism for providing translations. And so the cost for them is, is pretty, is clear. It's basically what they've already been doing. Whereas those who, for who the cost is an estimate, those are the departments that have told me, these are the kinds of documents that we distribute to the public, these are the vital documents, this is how often we distribute them. For example, the Council on, Council on Aging has a monthly newsletter that goes out, and we basically took that letter, we sent it to a couple vendors to get the cost estimate of how much it will cost to, to translate that into the major languages listed here, and basically multiply that by 12 to get an estimated annual cost for translation. And we repeated that for all the departments that have been working with me so far over the last couple of months. And so the goal here is to sort of see how much implementing the language access policy will cost in terms of translation. I know that was one of the concerns that was brought up last time we met. And so we wanted to just give you all an idea, like some actual numbers on, on what we're estimating this to cost, so hopefully address some of those concerns. And so following this, hopefully, implementation of the language access policy will be done in phases. So we will continue to work with departments to keep polishing our definition of vital documents and improving how they're distributed. Just going to admit, Sarah here. We'll also establish an internal network to continue to check in and, and continue to implement the, the policy. And then each department, of course, will have their own sort of mini version of the policy, the language access plan, which will address their needs, their, their methods, and how to implement language access for them. And of course, continuing review and tweaking of the policy and the plan as, as we need it will be sort of our, our long-term goal. So that's all I had for you, that's all we had for you in terms of updates. So thank you again for having us here to discuss the policy. And I guess we'll, we'll take questions now.
David?
I have a fairly specific question, so I believe it's on your eighth slide.
Yes.
I noticed that for FY '26, you have $2,250 allocated for grievance forms, but on the same slide, grievance procedure under quality assurance, there aren't any funds allocated for that. So I'm just wondering how that works, if you have grievance forms but no procedures under which to process them?
Yeah, the, great question, thank you. I think I have my colleagues who actually know a little bit more about the budget here than I do. Caitlin?
Can you repeat the question? I'm, I'm looking at the budget, I'm just trying to figure out what you're looking at.
So for FY '26, you have $2,250 allocated for grievance forms. On the same slide, there is not any allocation for quality assurance, which includes grievance procedures. So I'm wondering, just the order...
Sure, so, yeah, so the grievance form would be translated, and that would be public-facing, which is what the cost is there. The development of the quality assurance tools would be all internal, so that would be our office in collaboration with, obviously Ahmed, and anybody else who needs to be a part of that process, developing a grievance procedure. So there, that is staff time. There shouldn't, that should all be done internally, there is no cost to that.
Okay.
Currently, that we can think of.
Mike, you have something?
I, I'm just thinking that, that there is a cost, it happens to be in the operating budget elsewhere. So I think it's important to recognize that there is a cost, but this is external.
Yeah, and we're only talking about translation cost.
Right, right, I understand, yeah.
Just a brief comment, I think I had raised a number of questions just about the budget and financial impacts and kind of a, a rollout plan that, that gave a sense of the magnitude of work, and I think they did a remarkable job, actually, in, in nailing this down. So it's really very helpful and has answered all my questions.
Yes, that, that was, you know, one of the issues that we raised back in October and addressed. And as, with respect to how that's going to impact individual departments, we will, you know, see that when we go through our budget reviews later on, after the financial plan is submitted, and we'll get a sense of how, you know, departments are incorporating this, this program into their, their budgets. Okay. Any, any other questions? Okay, I'd like to move approval of the language access plan. It's just the plan that we're, right, I'm sorry, language access policy.
Policy.
Okay. Uh move approval of the Language Access Policy, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Michael Sammon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Berman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Great, thanks. Next, uh we have a change of hours for Bell eighty six, doing business as uh Bell eighty six at three oh eight Harvard Street. Current operating hours are Monday through Sunday, twelve P M to twelve A M. Uh and the proposed operating hours would be Monday through Sunday, twelve P M to two A M. We have someone here from uh, I see we do have someone in the audience. And this did not get uh addressed at the um.
So let me, yeah, let me, let me just briefly for the audiences. So when I, under the policy that you promulgated, the new policy, the policy that you promulgated, any um establishment seeking to stay open past one A M. That is not, you know, has to go before you as opposed to to for the licensing panel and the purpose of that is to. Ensure the necessity to the business, you know, that it's in an appropriate location for a two A M license and all of that. Um so this is your first application under that revised policy.
And I knew that, I forgot.
Can I have a quick question before?
Yes.
So is this a public hearing? Did this public hearing already happen with the license subcommittee?
So this is an established business, the hearing is usually for the grant of a license, the change in hours doesn't actually require a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, interesting. But we did, did pull this out because of the policy and.
Right.
Pull it, pull this out of the license. So uh describe, you know, what you, you know, why you want the extended hours. Um the neighborhood within which you're operating and whether um later hours will have any impact on on your neighbors, residential neighbors.
Sure.
Um and uh anything else on your side?
Um first of all, thank you. Um it's uh, when I first applied, I took over the restaurant, or well, I I. Uh I started the restaurant about three months ago. And then um I know that the Brookline was in midst of a line allowing two A M license. But then while I was doing that, I was notified that two A M license would would not be granted. Because the Neighborhood Association objected to it. And while I went for the midnight or just a regular hour of operation until midnight. I was at the hearing and then um they said uh. Two A M, the Neighborhood Association, actually, I fall under the two A M license zone now. Where I know not yet, no, I I'm the first person to be here to request a two A M license. Right now, I know that I can operate until one A M. But uh I'm requesting two A M because I know there's a. Uh three oh eight Harvard Street, my restaurant, it's a briefly, I'll describe, it's a first Korean, like a tapas. Um restaurant, I guess, in. I'm Korean, but I think in America, it's like a small tapa style that we we serve to our uh customers, kind of pair with the wines or. People can come in for date night and the location where it is right now is right next to Coolidge Corner Theater. And then I know the latest movie is about like eleven thirty, like close to twelve midnight, when they end and then. We're right now open until midnight, I've been open for about three months, but I got a lot of customer after the movie that wants to come by. And have a just, you know, munch up some food or like have a drink. But then with the current hours being midnight, I cannot, you know, serve them at all. Any, any of my customers, their local customers. And then um and then one A M, I don't think uh. It'll, it kind of draws them either, because I I've been telling all the customers, you know, I'm going for hearing until two A M and everybody, I have a really good feedback from all the neighborhoods. Think, oh, that'd be fantastic, I can come for a late night, you know, just bite in a drink, you know, because uh. You know, that's what they've been wanting. I know the Hamilton Bar right behind me, next to the parking lot, they're open at the two A M, but that's a little bit more like a. Sports bar where they show like sports and it's a little bit loud, but my restaurant is like without a TV, it's kind of like a. Really, it's very similar to a restaurant, I don't know if you guys have been to Barcelona, but very, a lot smaller version of it. So and then um I know a lot of people are neighborhood. Association or neighbors are concerned about the like uh loudness or like drunk people that go, that might be going around at nighttime. But it's not a, it's a Korean restaurant that we serve uh, this restaurant has a soju, it's it's a very like a low dose. Like, I don't know if you guys ever had it, it's a very uh. Smooth, like a low dose alcohol, which is just like you just sip on it, it's not like anything that people, I'm not trying to attract a lot of college students in town. I know the neighborhood itself is not a college town, so I'm trying to focus mainly my business on a local neighborhood. Um people where they can just come in, just, you know, anytime, you know, up until, you know, one thirty A M, just gonna have a drink and a little bit of a bites.
Right, you 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 mentioned a neighborhood association, um where are the neighbors?
Uh the Brookline.
Behind you is a parking lot.
Yeah, parking lot, but then uh like a behind the parking lot, I know there's a new apartment coming up and then there's like a lot of houses and then. There's a bunch of houses around the neighborhood, like a local people, it's a walkable distance where I'm located right now.
Okay, but is that, are they questioning you because of noise?
No, I think that was a main concern when I heard the two A M was rejected for the Brookline. Was uh the main concern was uh, uh I don't recall a hundred percent, but the main concern was a. Possibility, possibility of a like allowed people or, you know, people are trying to just sleep at night or.
You're talking about, there's a general objection. No one, no one actually came to you and said.
Yeah, nobody came to me, nobody came to me, but I know I wanted a two A M, but then I couldn't get that because, you know, it wasn't approved, yeah.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, uh so I'm very familiar, uh Amy and I were, I think, one of your first customers.
Yes.
Date night, if you recall, um when you first opened, um I can attest that this is a very quiet restaurant. Um uh bistro, um I don't even think you have a bar, right? It's all, it's all seating.
I have a little small bar.
In the back.
Like right in the bathroom.
In the back.
It's a small restaurant, so.
Three seats or something, uh four seats, so uh it is very quiet. Um, you know, this area is, you know, um. Commercial, there's actually no residential uh i- 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 around it, so I'm not sure what. Uh if, I think with Bernard said or or Chaz, there is really no neighborhood association, I think you may be referring to the broader. Um but uh you know, I'm, I'm I'm really interested in in this tie between the Coolidge Corner Theater. And opportunities to have uh, you know, um a synergistic type of offering when they get out. Um I don't think, I don't think the Coolidge Corner Theater go as a big party or is that one in the mornings. Um I would be inclined to 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 support this and I I do uh attest to the fact that he he met, he has an excellent offering. Um and this is not a sports bar or party place.
Uh Michael.
So I.
Even a sports bar behind a parking lot.
It's not bad either.
I I I think um I it's important to remember that the Coolidge runs some movies at midnight, you know, uh so and and some. Uh and they're movies that are aimed at a relatively young audience because that's who stays up after midnight to go to the movies. Um but uh if we're gonna try out a two A M license, uh this is the place, I mean, if you look around. It's all one story, two story commercial, um and you'd have to really make a lot of noise. To uh uh to be audible down Babcock Street or uh in back of the, you know, all the way over in back of uh of Center Street. So I'm the one who's usually very cautious about this, uh not here, this is, this is okay.
Uh you you Mike's comments very much represent my views on this. Um and Paul's too, uh you know, if if we're gonna have two A M licenses anywhere, this seems like like a good spot. I I am just going to sort of um. Pro, I I I want to specify, because I think it's, it's, we have to be very, very careful about. People who are there but not seen and it it feels like in this conversation, we keep sort of overlooking. That there are actually people who live right nearby, there's the whole Bob facility development that's been there for years bordering the Center Street. Parking lot, which is the parking lot that's right behind, you know, this, so I don't want them to feel unseen, you know, that's that's a. Phrase we hear often, you know, uh these days that um people come forward who sort of feel not seen. Um we we recognize that there are people not too far away from this, but we also recognize that. A really good case has been made that um this will work out fine for the customers and it'll work out fine for all of the neighbors, commercial and residential.
Okay, I'd like to move approval of the two A M uh license, um any further discussion? Uh all in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Michael Sammon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Berman.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience as we work through this.
Next, uh we have uh police detail rates, question of approving the change in. Police detail rates as recommended by the chief of police, uh Chief Faster.
Good evening, everyone. Uh thank you for hearing this matter, I'm. Here before you tonight to request that you consider a, an increase in our police detail rate. Um you have the memo in front of you, I won't bore you by reading it, but um in short form, what this does is bring us in alignment. With our surrounding communities, uh specifically Boston and the city of Newton, for which we have a reciprocal agreement regarding detail officers.
Any questions? Uh John.
Is it, is it possible that um as a result of this increase in rates, um that we will actually benefit from um. You know, a little bit of spillover in money that comes to the town and through the police department for for use for services?
That's exactly right, the the cut uh is ten percent, that remains unchanged, so the town should see an increase uh in revenue, you're welcome Charlie.
Great, I just wanted to be sure people understood that, because you hear increasing rates and you think, oh boy, now we're gonna pay even more and it's gonna come out of the town's pocket. It actually is the opposite.
It's a benefit to the officers themselves and the town itself, sure.
And the detail rates the town pays don't change.
That's correct, so for example, if there's a water main break and we're simply assisting uh, you know, the D P W, the water department, um so that they can do their work. That's going to continue to be paid at an overtime rate, um so that we won't, the town, uh that side of the town will not feel squeezed.
Great.
Did you?
You asked my question?
No, I was just gonna say, it sounds like a win-win.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
You.
Oh, I.
You asked my question.
Okay.
There you go.
Any other uh discussion? Okay, I'd like to move approval of uh approving the change in police detail rates as recommended by the chief of police. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Michael Sammon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Berman.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next we have uh Aaron Shute, Commissioner of D P W. Uh presenting uh two things, solid waste recycling contract. Solid waste and recycling contract and um sanitation fee uh increased. And we're getting some estimations.
And we have.
Appreciate your hard copy.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Just gave Kevin a co-host so he can share his video.
Okay, so um good evening, my name is Aaron Shute, I'm the Commissioner of Public Works. I'm here this evening with Kevin Johnson, he's our Deputy Commissioner of Operations for D P W and Director of Highway Sanitation and Fleet Services. And also uh John Dempsey, the Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, they are both uh online. Uh this evening, we have two important sanitation program items for your consideration. Uh the first is the recommendation to award and execute a new sanitation contract with Casella Waste Management. Of Massachusetts, our current vendor. Uh for a five-year contract commenced in July first, twenty twenty-five and continuing through June thirtieth, twenty thirty. This will be the F Y twenty-six to F Y thirty uh fiscal years for the town. The second is the approval of updated rates or cart fees. To commence also on July one, twenty twenty-five, the beginning of the fiscal year, and we propose to increase four percent. Uh per year to keep up with the annual increase in cost to run the program that would be through fiscal year thirty. I'll present both together and then pause for questions. So the current contract with Casella for collecting and processing single stream recycling. And disposal of municipal solid waste will expire this year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh following best practices and proactively seeking the most advantageous pricing and services for the town. We partnered with the City of Newton. Uh and put together a collaborative municipal solid waste bid package. That allowed us to compare the cost of each discrete hauling, processing or disposal service. The two municipalities worked together through the bidding and negotiation processes to create a model contract. After extensive negotiations with the two most advantageous bill bidders. Casella Waste Management of Massachusetts, the town's current uh service providers I mentioned. Offered the most competitive pricing for Brookline. Newton and Brookline finalized negotiations with different contractors that met our respective and unique needs. Uh both municipalities felt that the competitive process yielded beneficial results for both communities. Uh and this bidding process was a unique opportunity to evaluate our services, revisit our service delivery model. And in the fall, as you can recollect, we came to the select board and shared um both with you and the public. The difficulties that we were having um staffing the sanitation positions. Uh Director Johnson has been trying for years to fill vacant um positions and has been challenged with little to no interest, prolonged injuries, illnesses. Um and overall challenges of getting the work done, I'll provide a a brief um summary. Um regarding in-house collection and our concern regarding the viability of this in-house function. And our proposal is founded on our goal to provide efficient, reliable, predictable and sustainable sanitation services. Um to our residents of this town. So municipal solid waste, yard waste, bulky waste is currently collected by in-house staff. The contractor, Casella, um collects, hauls and processes our single stream recycling. And hauls and disposes of municipal trash and bulky waste. They follow the same schedule, rules for placement um and collection as the town, they've worked with the town as our contractor for the past ten years. Uh it's a seamless operation to the resident and one that will remain so with a new contract. Uh hybrid pay-as-you throw commenced in two thousand seventeen. And it's been instrumental in incentivizing waste reduction, it has achieved significant improvements in recycling and diversion rates. Uh and at the time, the town was considering contracting out uh the trash collection. With the deployment of the carts and through negotiations, the town cut two employees in sanitation and kept the collection in-house. The problem is that D P W is unable to service the collection routes with the reduced staffing. So the questions as we're evaluating the contracts that we posed for ourselves, I think we talked with the select board in the fall, is. How can Brookline achieve predictable costs and reliable service delivery? What steps can be taken to modernize the fleet and improve efficiency? How can we ensure safety and sustainability in our sanitation services? And also, what are the long-term exposures for operating capital costs and liabilities? So as a, kind of to revisit some of the challenges that we have, and this has been a really um sort of a a big decision. Um for us as we um bring this before you, but the biggest challenge with in-house sanitation services is we're not. Staffed to provide them. Uh we've had a tremendous difficulty filling these positions, we've advertised them for years and unable to successfully fill them. Uh we currently have nine in-house positions for the collection services provided by D P W. And of those nine positions, four are filled um with full-time staff. And one of those is on an extended leave, leaving three positions filled and six positions to be backfilled. And and generally, five of those six individuals don't want to be on that function, so they want to be doing a different function in uh the highway uh division. This has had a negative impact on other service functions such as line painting, commercial areas cleaning. Uh maintenance, potholes, sidewalk, ramp work that we formerly um. Were able to do with in-house crews and has led to poor morale, as employees have been shifted to the sanitation function. Often last minute and find their job to be unpredictable, uh and not the job that they felt they were hired uh to do for the town. Uh we've had five new hires leave because of this unpredictability and not wanting to do that job. I will note, though, that the um four employees that are full-time now on sanitation. Do want and are committed to that function, it's just that we simply cannot run the program uh with that staffing. It's just that we simply cannot run the program with that staffing. We also have an aging fleet that is overdue for replacement. Sanitation packers are very expensive to purchase and expensive to maintain. The mechanic's time is consumed by outdated trucks and the increased time and cost to service the sanitation trucks impact other vehicle maintenance townwide. And there's also the liability. Sanitation is one of the most dangerous occupations in the United States. There are inherent legal and financial little bit liabilities associated with this function. And along with other work-related injuries, in between fiscal year '21 and '24, we had 23 injuries that yielded over 1,100 out-of-work days. And as we put, new and inexperienced staff who don't want to work on sanitation on that function, you have delays and greater chances for injury. So regrettably, this is not an operation model that we can sustain. The benefits of contracting sanitation are cost predictability and budget control, enhanced service reliability and access to modern equipment, reduced liability and improved safety, improved employee morale and retention, less workers' compensation risk, and no drain on the other division operations. So DPW proposes to transition the town's municipal solid waste and recycling program to a fully outsourced collection model, excluding yard waste collection to ensure cost effectiveness, safety, and service reliability. So this is, you have this in your packets, and I did hand this out. At least at home, they can kind of zoom in. But these are the prices that we negotiated with Casella. It shows that it itemizes the trash collection, recycling, cart maintenance, the white goods and bulky collection, along with matracing, and then processing costs. Also, there is a host fee that we're able to take advantage of because of the transfer station, which gives us a credit annually as well and reduces our overall cost. And just so it's a little easier to look at, the Casella contract and disposal, if you look at the different components within that contract, that first year is $4.792 million. And then you can see how the values go up from there. And then below, below it, I'm showing you the percentage increase per year in the Casella contract. And so, in order to make this recommendation to you, we were obviously looking at all of our operational challenges, but we also do a full cost accounting every time. Kind of we're looking at our operation, preparing our budget for the next year, and also in preparing rate setting for this service. And in looking at the full cost accounting, the town's costs with in-house collection is the bar chart on the right, which is the $6.615 million. And then with contractual services, it's the one on the left, which is the $6.677 million all in. And so, the program costs, while close, the in-house costs are slightly less. This does include two additional FTE and a plan for phasing and replacement of the fleet over time, which would be necessary to run the program. Just noting that the full cost accounting includes staff, salary, overtime, longevity, benefits, accounting, all the services and disposal, fleet, fuel, maintenance, retirement billing. But it also covers operation of the scale house, the transfer station inspections, code enforcement, zero-waste and recycling programming, textiles, household hazardous waste drop-off and disposal, school composting, bulky waste, and mattress recycling. So there are components that are not part of the Casella contract that are part of our overall sanitation program that is factored into the rates. So our recommendation is to award and execute a five-year sanitation services contract with Casella Waste Management for fiscal year '26 through '30 in the amount of $26,356,829 with approval of the FY '26 contract at a value of $4.792 million. And that takes into account the credit that we get from Casella. And this will include solid waste collection being outsourced, but yard waste collection remaining in-house. I'm going to continue, and we'll come back to that recommendation at the end. So I'm going to talk more about fees, and then you'll have both of my recommendations at the end. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about all of this. So, the sanitation program relies on revenue generated by the refuse fee to offset a portion of the total cost of solid waste collection and disposal, recycling, collection material, processing, yard waste, et cetera. And historically, we have targeted a 75%, 25% cost share. So 75% resident fee, 25% subsidized by tax subsidy. But this varies with costs and timing of fee increase. And we also try to balance overall impact to the participant. Since the program commenced in 2017, fees increased in January 2021. They didn't increase again until July 2023. And we're now proposing these fees to be effective July 1, 2025. They can be revisited if necessary in any given year, but barring any significant changes, this proposal, which also has the 4% that would increase through FY '27, '28, '29, and '30, it will allow us to, in essence, keep our cost share stable through the duration of the contract. Okay. So here, you're seeing the cost share, and you're seeing that we have 9.5% since FY '25. That is our increase going into '26. It's actually a little greater than that going back to '24. And then what averages at about 4% over the remaining years? We take a look at that and just sort of, kind of look at what the bulk of those costs are. That, that sort of top blue is benefits and other overhead. If you balance that with the bottom green, that's your personnel cost. So those together are, you know, sort of our personnel costs. And then we move into contractual services. That's that largest green. And contractual services is going to be both your collection and all of your disposal costs in every category that we have. Capital outlay is the equipment, and then supplies is a small component. So our proposal going into FY '26 is an increase on the current rates of, so looking at the cart fees, it's a 10% increase for the 35-gallon cart, 11% for the 65-gallon cart, and 12% for the 95-gallon cart, 10% also for the bags only, which we have very few residents that participate in that. And this fee proposal was approved by the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Over time, they would like us, and I initially had gone to them with sort of 10% across the board. They said they really wanted us to do a better job of incentivizing the smaller carts and to really push our overall waste reduction goals for the town. So we made a slight adjustment in the percentage increases. And that is something that's WAC would like the board and Public Works to look at further in the future to try to even further incentivize the smaller carts. And I'll come back to the carts. But I did want to share that we do charge as well for special waste and bulky waste pickups. And prior to charging, and you, at home, this is sort of a chart that for those at home, you can't probably see all the numbers, but we're going back to FY '20 to look at the number of requests we had for special pickups, the number of items that we picked up. We started charging a very small fee, and we have an increase that we're recommending, but it remains very small, still highly subsidized. We started charging fees in FY '24. And the big difference to note here is that it was pretty consistent, but through FY '23, that year, we collected over 16,000 items. And then when we charged the fee, $10 and $20 per item, that went down to $7,500 in FY '24. And Newton said they experienced the same thing, that they had a 70% reduction. And just that small change of having to pay a fee that the residents are actually thinking about, is there something else I could do with this? There's a step I'm going to have to take anyway. I'm not just putting it outside. Is there someone I can give this to? Can I donate it to goodwill? You know, is my nephew moving into, you know, college housing, whatever it might be? And so people are taking the time to think about that, and that has helped us actually reduce our overall tonnage. So it's really been a win-win. And so, looking forward for FY '26, we're looking to go to a $65 cart swap fee, $20 for large white goods and bulky goods, $30 for electronics, and $65 for mattresses. Mattresses are collected separately. They're stored separately. And then we work with a vendor who then actually recycles them, and this is mandated by the state of Massachusetts. Again, this table, which is going to be hard to see at home, but I just wanted to show what the difference is in fiscal years when you're looking at the 10%, 11%, and 12% for FY '26, and then what that looks like going out in '27 through FY '30. So with our first year, you're looking at an increase of $25 for 35 gallons, $36 or about $37 for 65 gallons, and $51, this is per year, for the 95 gallon. And for months, monthly increases, it's about $2 an increase per month for the 35 gallon, and it's $4.25 for the 95 gallon. And then when you're looking at the 4% increase in years out, that's really averaging, it's about $11 per year for the 35 gallon, up to $19, $20 for the 95 gallon. And per month, it's really between a dollar or a $1.60 per month increase you'll see over that time period. And what that does, if you look at the bottom of the chart, is we're not at that 75%, 25% split. It's really, we're currently at maybe a 68%. This is getting us to a 70% and 30% about that, and it's holding that steady for the next five years. And the intent of that is to have some predictability in terms of budget planning, I think both for the town and then also for the residents. And so our proposal, this is kind of putting it all together. You can see the cart price increases at 10% to 12%, depending upon size. That's in the middle there. The special pickups, both for large bulky goods and white goods, at $20 and $30. $65 cost for both a cart swap or mattresses. And then bags, the individual bags, at $22 a roll and 4% increase. And we also are proposing that the individual, the bulky items, the white goods, the mattresses, go up $2.50 per year in each category in subsequent years. And that would be '27, '28, '29, and '30. So with that, I have the recommendation. This is just the sort of final sheet that has the language around the votes, both for the contract and the sanitation rates. So I am sure that you have many questions. I'm glad to answer them. As I mentioned, Kevin Johnson and John Dempsey are both online as well.
Thank you. Very thorough. Of course, we have already read this. We're in agreement upon certain things. David has his hand up first.
Just a question regarding costs. So you have a comparison between contracting this out to Casella as well as keeping it in-house. There's about a $62,000 difference where it's cheaper to keep it in-house. But my question to you around that, if you look beyond just the comparison of the collection and processing of trash and recycling-related collection services, you reference liabilities and that that has a cost. You reference that staffing hasn't always been stable. So I presume there might be related HR-related costs built into that. Could you describe what some of the maybe opportunity costs and what different DPW employees can engage in that's not with trash collection? Could you maybe explain what some of the other costs are that might not be in that direct analysis?
Absolutely. So costs that are not, that we haven't accounted for in that comparison are going to be legal costs. They are, you know, costs associated with work that we're not able to do because staffing has been diverted to the sanitation function. So we're not able to, you know, you don't see the sidewalk that we weren't able to pour, the, you know, the work that then therefore had to go into the contract instead of being done in-house and may have been something we could have done more efficiently in-house had we had the staff. The, I mean, there are a lot of sort of uncaptured costs with that. I think the, you mentioned HR and kind of personnel costs with both hiring staff and how labor-intensive that is just in terms of the posting and the interviews and onboarding, you know, and potentially, and then needing to do that repeatedly and not being able to fill these positions.
So from a financial cost perspective, do you have confidence that over the five-year duration of this contract, Casella would actually cost less monetarily?
No, Casella will cost more monetarily.
But I mean, when you factor in these other costs that you're referencing.
So I am not presenting this in any way as a cost-saving measure for the town. So I don't want to misrepresent that. There are a lot of intangibles that, you know, that, you know, we have not put in that analysis on the town side. What we're presenting is we think that we currently have a model that is positioned to fail. And we are really looking to make sure that we can provide this critical service to the town. So this is really about operation services and sustainability. And with that, there's a cost.
So, thank you very much. We are, I think all of us are used to very thorough presentations, and you have certainly not disappointed us. This is a great presentation, start to finish. I do have a couple of questions. One is, there's a charge for white goods and electronics as special items. White goods or appliances and that sort of thing. But what about, somebody has a collection of cables and wires or small electronics products, Wi-Fi router or something of that sort? Is there any kind of mechanism for collecting that kind of electronic waste separately? Or do you wait for the hazardous waste period during the summertime when people can drop that sort of stuff off?
It's funny, that's exactly what I was going to suggest. Actually, it's bringing it with you when you come from Household Hazardous Waste Day because they'll just take those at no additional cost. But I will sort of ask Kevin if he has any, who's online, if he has any other suggestions around any of those sort of ancillary electronic components that aren't necessarily large or particularly bulky, and the best way to get rid of them, maybe in between, if there is any other way in between Household Hazardous Waste Day.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. Kevin Johnson, Deputy Commissioner of Operations and Highway and Sanitation Director. Unfortunately, the best way to, obviously, to get rid of some of those items is at Household. at Household Hazardous Waste Day. There's not too many local companies or vendors that take that, that you can drive and drop it off or call and pick it up. We, we work every day to try to find accessibility for stuff like this so that we can keep it out of the trash. But right now, our best option is to bring it up to Household Hazardous Waste.
Okay. And then one other question, if I may, a different one. The, the change in the ratio between what the residents pay for and what the town pays for, pays for, is moving, or has in effect been crawling from 75% residents down towards 70%, 71, 72. Why not gradually restore the 75%, which I recognize results in higher fees, but doing that over a period of time to get us back to a 75, 25 split?
So we could do that. We absolutely can do that, and we could do that in a way that would, would sort of, I think, phase that in potentially for the resident. I did run a model for that. And if, instead of 4% across the board and in keeping with SWAC's direction to try to incentivize the 35-gallon cart, we could do 5% year two for the 35 gallon, and then, let me make sure I have that right. I think it's...
I, I...
No, it was four, five, and six. There's a way to do it so that the 35-gallon cart would be 4% for the first year and 5% after that. The 35, the 65 could be 5%, 6% after that, and the 95 could be 7% and 8% after that. And so that then combined gets the town to actually a 74 and 1/2, you know, split. So it would be over time, it's over the five years, it phases it in more slowly, isn't sort of a cost, cost shock at first. And so that's, that is an option.
And is that, so that, as you said, we can change rates anytime.
Mm-hmm.
That's something that we could take a look at. It really depends on the budget as a whole, it seems to me. It's not an inconsequential subsidy after all.
Yeah, we, and we've, we actually talked about this. I think it's, I think it's well worth discussing as part of the broader question about revenues and expenditures that we're gonna have over the course of this year.
Yeah. Personally, I think, as, as, it's always painful to recommend an increase in rates, and as long as you're increasing rates, I think, you know, you may want to think very seriously about increasing them back to that 75, 25. There's nothing sacred about the ratio, really, except to say that as a philosophical matter, people should be paying for what they throw away.
Paul.
Yep. I'm gonna just do a quick follow-on to that, and then I have another question. I, well, I agree with you that people should pay more for what they're, they're using. We just remember that this once was included in our taxes.
I'm, I'm...
And so, you know, so I just, I, I want to be sensitive to the fact that although 4% or 5%, $51 here or something seems to be a nominal amount, it's actually, it, it's, given all the other things we're charging, parking fees are increasing, parking tickets are, I mean, well, everything's going up. And while one discrete service may seem minor in the grand scheme of things, on top of real estate taxes going up and all the other costs, it isn't insignificant. So I think we need to think hard about that. That's just my view, and I don't think we're gonna decide that tonight. I did have, I don't think we are, right? We're gonna, we're taking the proposal that you're giving to us unless we're gonna defer.
No, I think the propos, so the proposal, I wanted to sort of share that I did, I did look at that and really was trying to manage kind of cost shock as well.
Yeah.
But I do recommend the 4% to make sure that we don't dip down over the course. And we can revisit, and I think also look at kind of a bigger picture kind of budget management, and that's something that the town administrator and I can do.
So onto my real question, Bernard, if I may. So I'm just curious about the transfer station. So I saw that we get a credit. I, I don't really fully understand what the transfer, I know there's, it's for transferring stuff. What, what are we going to put there and what are we transferring? And how much land is it, is being used for that?
So the, the transfer station is, and, you know, I'm gonna let Kevin, this actually is probably a great opportunity for Kevin to, to jump in, but I think I'll say we have about five acres. It's the rear landfill, the, the full transfer station. Town uses it entirely. We have all of our, our bulk storage is there. So everything from our, we have our, our catch basin cleanings, our sand, our loam, our, our concrete, our cement, our spo, like, so we store, we have all, the whole transfer station. There's, yeah, so we have a full operation that's running there, and we have a transfer station that's, that is regulated by the DEP. And we are allowed to take, it's, it's 135 tons. Is this per day, Kevin? Am I...
Yeah, 135 tons per day.
135 tons per day. Our tonnage may be something around 30 per day. I'm gonna say 30, 35.
Mm-hmm. Yep, 30 and 32 tons a day, yep.
Okay. And so the, the vendor then is able to use our remaining 100 tons and bring in waste from their other clients that come in. They weigh everything at our, at our scale house, consolidate their waste, and then take that with our waste to the waste-to-energy disposal facilities. And this has been very successful over the last 10 years.
So they've, so we've been, so they've been, this agreement, this type of thing has been in place?
It's been in place.
So they've been paying us or crediting us?
That's right.
Or, okay. And it's worth about $200,000 a year?
That's right.
Okay.
And it was $168,000 in our last contract, and we negotiated that up.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
All right, John.
Thank you for a very thorough presentation and a very thoughtful exercise in, you know, how do we anticipate a problem and deal with it before it becomes, you know, the problem? I, I had various reactions to this from people who, you know, want to express an opinion on it one way or the other. One of the responses, I just want to pass along as a compliment to some of the employees who are still with the department and are still performing the service. I won't name names, but the, some of them are popular with their customers, and that's always good to hear. There are people who actually feel like they have gotten to know their pickup person, and they are gonna miss that person. And they're, they're feeling a little bad about this right now, but I think most of them are, are going to understand and keep this in perspective. The other, the other response that I'll, I'll pass along, and it's just a question, do we have equipment that was purchased on the expectation that we would be continuing to do the service in-house that is, in any sense, less useful and therefore less valuable now if we're going to contract to Casella?
So we, we will be keeping the yard waste function in-house, so I think the, we will need two packers for that. We'll keep the electric packer that we were able to achieve last, we were able to purchase last year with a grant. It's actually sort of perfect for that type of function, because that's, you know, we, we don't do that in the coldest months, and then we'll have a backup packer. The balance of our, our equipment is really quite old, so there isn't anything that's been purchased, that, that has been newly purchased, that, you know, we will be kind of losing the value. We've gotten great value out of the equipment that we have. I really applaud the mechanics who have done a great job keeping them and getting them back on the road.
Are we gonna de-access any equipment?
We, we would. So we're looking at four packers that we would, in essence, be able to look to see, look to see what we can get for value for the town.
And I don't know, I, I apologize if I, if you covered it in your presentation and I missed it. Is there going to be any work with Casella to arrange for any employees who are current town employees who wish to become employees, continue to be employees in this field and in this service, to, to do it through employment with Casella?
So we would be certainly glad to provide sort of recommendations or references, but our commitment was to the employees was to make sure that they were, remain employed by the town. Same benefits, same pay, that there would be no loss in any of that, any time. And so if someone wanted to work for Casella, I imagine they would be, you know, a really strong candidate. They know the town, they know the route. Casella also knows the town and knows the routes, because they're doing it right now with the recycling. I love to hear that people get, do get to know their sort of sanitation folks that are assigned to them. I think that holds true for the Casella staff as well, because we have the, the same folks generally that come through, you know, and are assigned to those, those routes. So we're, we're certainly glad to help someone if, if that were the case, that they were interested in going to Casella. But our commitment is to, to keep them employed here.
Thanks.
Mike.
So I just, I, I do have a question, but I, I just imagining in my mind Joe's certified secondhand packers on the lot somewhere for giant disposal of those four vehicles.
Vehicles.
Right. You mentioned that, and this is made out of really curiosity rather than substance here, Newton chose a different, some of the other than Casella, using the same model contract, which is kind of interesting to hear.
I, I think just, it was actually very interesting for us as well through the, through the process. What we found is that the transfer station is a real asset to Brookline. It is unique, and it gave us a competitive advantage in terms of, you know, what the, the successful contractor, what they would be able to do. And Newton currently has a contract with a disposal site, and so they are only going to one disposal site with their waste, and they have probably double the amount that we have. And so with 90 tons of waste, co-mingling them, are they now going to only one site? It, it became complicated and less financially advantageous due to this sort of, I, I would say the big factors really were, they already had a contract with a disposal site, and we allow that flexibility to the, to the contractor. They work with several waste-to-energy facilities, and they look at, see what the lines are at that facility that day, et cetera. And so it, it, I think restricted them more, and we were able to get better pricing by being individual. But again, it worked out well for both of us.
Yeah, I would, I compliment on the, working with another community, especially, you know, a similar community has similar kinds of needs, is a really good idea.
Yeah.
So that's great.
Yeah, we really, we negotiated together right until the end.
Yep.
Really.
Paul.
Yep, just one, one final question, just to, I just want to confirm my understanding. So should we approve this? We, while we will lose some union jobs in that the ones that are open, that you can't hire, those, we won't hire those, but any existing positions would, do have employment with the town in another capacity, I assume at the same rate and pay and benefits and all that? Is that, is that true?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I would like to move approval of, first of all, the refused fee schedule.
Yes, and could you, yeah, and could you, I don't know if you're looking at the agenda, maybe just look at the last, the last page of the presentation right there might be helpful. A little bigger, yeah.
You don't want me to read all the rates?
No, you certainly don't have to. You can say as presented.
And I'll, I'll approve the contract first. Okay, I move approval of the award and execution of a five-year sanitation services contract with Casella Waste Management for fiscal year '26 through '30 in the amount of $26,356,829 with approval of the fiscal year '26 contract at a value of $4,792,000. Got an adequate explanation?
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good to me, too. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, I move approval of a sanitation rate structure as presented on January 14, 2025, today, as laid out in the materials in the packet. All in favor, unless you want me to read the rates, okay? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
And thank you for a very thorough presentation and materials. We'll all go home and study it.
My pleasure. Have a good night.
Thank you. And I see John Dempsey's in the audience. Thank you for your work. No, we didn't, but...
We did.
He did a lot of work in the background. We appreciate that. Okay, final items on our agenda. A question of appointing the following individuals to boards and commissions. David Pearlman as the select board representative and chair of the committee of seven for the Jack Corain Ice Rink, and naming committee Elizabeth J. Armstrong, which, who will be a preservation commission representative.
I did just want to flag, there was a late-breaking request to just edit and clarify in the memo appointing David to that committee of seven, that both of those committees are to be guided by your recommendation that you made in September about what the rink is supposed to look like. That is to say, it's supposed to stay in its current location, and it's not going to be covered. So both of those things are now reflected in the memo on page one there, that reflects the language of your vote on the 17th. And actually, Paul pointed out that there was a, just a error in the minutes from the 17th, so we'll bring that back to you on the 28th and fix that so that the language of your vote is clear.
Okay, good. Very important.
Oh, good catch.
Okay. With that, I move approval of the two appointments. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And with that, unless there's any one in the audience who'd like to make public comment at the end of our meeting?
Sure. Folks, no one has their hand raised right now, and nobody asked to speak at the end. I can, I can check if anyone...
Someone just handed it back there. I shouldn't have said that.
Please go ahead and approach the podium.
Please go up and... Turn it. Never too late, right?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Ronald. I've been...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Just get closer, that's all.
My name is Ronald Eggleston, and I lived in Brookline for 15 years. And from those 15 years, I don't even see a community in Brookline Village, there's everything that's passing Brookline Village. We have leaders that's supposed to represent us, but they're representing the board and everything else, and it's just like confusing when you go out. Everybody in our community go out, what do they see when they come out? They see a hospital. They see all business surround them when they go out. They go to, see a hotel. But there's nothing for the community, and this is sad. You know what I mean? For not to have a community that representing a community and have nobody representing it. And you look at the people, the children that's growing up, and this is what they see. This is what they've programmed to see. Is this supposed to be like that? Where they're supposed to have no type of enjoyment, no type of... No type of want, want to accept this, you know what I mean? Make them feel bad, you know, we brainwash them to this is what life is all about. We don't have no type of, you know, I mean, community, no, no type of places where they can just enjoy life as well as, as being a kid, growing up. You know, I mean, learning in their community. Instead of looking at it, it's like it's just a business and, and just being programmed. And I'm just tired of seeing that. I don't see no restaurant in Brookline Way. I don't see none of that. But when I walk up towards this way, I see everything. I don't see nothing for, matter of fact, I don't see nothing for black and brown people. I'm just tired. I rest my, my three minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, we have just a couple of minutes left of public comment time. I'm not seeing anyone who is raising their hand in the online audience or in person. So I think.
Okay, with that, the meeting is hereby declared to be over.
Wait a minute, I think you got someone else coming up. Oh. Nope. Want to speak?
Yes.
Feel free. We have time for one more.
You, you guys are pretty familiar with me at this time. Didn't plan on speaking, but something just came to my mind. About two weeks ago, I think, Atto Conquest was right here to talk about the restorative justice stuff you guys tried to pull off, right? Clearly, that didn't work as well. And last week, I think a lady spoke when you, Mike, was talking about the issues between the lady and her neighbor. So the lady that spoke last week about apartment and told you you supported somebody and she doesn't.
Oh, yes, 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 thank you.
So I just wanted to point out a glaring factor, right? When it was all black people, you guys all got together and worried about black communities and the issue. That's what brought about the restorative justice you guys paid money for, to try to get people to settle that. So that didn't work. Let's try to use that money to settle white folks' problem too. Because restorative justice is not just strictly for black people. So I would like you guys to do that. Because if not, it's going to seem intentional that you spent that money when it had to do with black folks. So I just, it just came to my mind, right? That you guys should use that same intent. And when it comes to white folks having disagreement, which you mentioned, between the lady and the neighbor, you could use restorative justice for that. How about we try that? It's going to catch up though. It's going to, but I just, I just wanted to mention that on public record. And Atto did, Atto keep giving us, it's a lot he's saying publicly. And we plan to use that too as well. So happy 2025. It's going to be a long year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, we do use restorative justice practices in the high school and I think elsewhere in the school system. So much more broader than just this. Good? Yes, it's over.